The December 9th, 2014 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roles?
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Ms. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are being televised this evening. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a golden rod form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete a green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by Board Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents wishing to address the board concerning a rec-- board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. If you plan to address the school board tonight, you need to be aware of the procedures the school board has adopted for that. A copy is available to you from Kevin Christian on one of the front tables. Audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. Audiovisual presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. The use of students' names except by his or her guardians or parents, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families, is strictly prohibited. Based on time consideration, the school board by majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move public comment to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether.
Brenda, do you have any speakers today?
Mr. Michael Ferrara and Ms. Rebecca Kemp.
My name is Rebecca Kemp. Our address is 1200 Northeast 30th Avenue, Unit 602, Ocala 34470. When your parents say they hope you have one just like you, it's a curse and a blessing all at the exact same time. My son is struggling, and I'm fed up with his elementary school. It's endless problems. I don't feel like I'm being taken seriously as a parent. I don't think I'm being paid attention to as a parent. I don't feel like they care to help me help my son. On October 27th, I wrote the school with a written consent requesting for him to be tested for special education. He struggles. He's gone from above standards to below standards in math. For me, that's concerning, as I am a diagnosed-- I'm dyscalculic. I have many learning disabilities myself. He has gone from above standards to below standards within like a single semester. That's concerning as a parent. You don't expect that. So I wrote the school a letter on the 27th requesting, "This is my written consent. I want you to test my child. We have a problem." It took two weeks from that date to receive any sort of contact from the school psychologist. The statute states that the results are supposed to be presented to the parent within sixty days of written consent. Based on the date that I originally sent the letter, I should be receiving the report by December 26th. He hasn't even been tested yet. When I spoke with the school psychologist on the 11th of October, she asked me if I had received anything written from the school to sign their consent paper. I had not. I said, "I already sent in a written letter of consent." "Oh, well, you should have received something else to sign." But that's two weeks now-- two weeks have now gone by, where we should have been a little further into the process at this point. The school never receives it after I send it back in. So I emailed the county counselor on November 25th, and he emailed me the consent again, and I signed it, and I emailed it right back to him. That was on-- he received that email at 10:20-- 10:08 AM on 11/25. To date, I've still heard nothing. I don't know when he's being tested. I don't know anything. My son is one of those type of kids that he's over the top. He's a drama king. I'll just call it what it is. He's-- he gets aggravated very easily. Last week, perfect example, he was in a class and he was doing something on the computer and it wasn't going the way he wanted. So he was mad, and that's the word he used with Mr. Runford, the new dean. "I'm mad." So what did he do? He stood in line while they were waiting to go back to the classroom and decided to start acting like a stormtrooper from Star Wars. It's his outlet, so be it. Not the greatest one, but it's his outlet. What happened? He got in trouble for it. He was then wanted him to go to the pass program, which I don't approve of for a child of his age. So we kept him home, did all of his schoolwork. He was homeschooled basically for the day. But these are things that if they were taking me seriously, we could possibly avoid by helping teach him better ways. I emailed his teacher. Can you please tell me where he's having problems in math? Because I'm sure you all know, core math wasn't around when we were his age. We had to Google his homework one night. That's pretty embarrassing when your parents have to Google your homework. She basically told me to figure it out myself. She told me, "Oh, well, I sent paperwork home with him. Go over it with him." Well, if I don't understand what I'm teaching him, how am I supposed to go over it with him? We sat down. We couldn't figure out what was the problems. We ended up, like I said, Googling it, and both of us by the end of the night were completely frustrated. I still don't know what the problems are. She still won't answer me. So I need help. I don't know what else to do at this point.
Ms. Ferrara, I thank you for coming to the board with your situation. Before I refer this out, I'm going to ask the superintendent, may I refer this to Mr. Villanella? Mr. Villanella, if you would stand in the back so that they can recognize you. Do I have any board comments to you? But we hear you, and we understand, and we want to work this out for you. So I'm getting Superintendent to have Mr. Villanella work with you on that. Any board comment on it?
I share your concerns, and we're going to do what we can to help you and help your son for sure. And Mr. Villanella is the key that will-- he'll be able to give you the answers, okay?
He's helped us before. He's absolutely wonderful.
All right. Ms. Stacy, you have a comment?
I'd just like to say thank you for coming. Instead of letting your child fall farther and farther behind like so many people do, you're a great mom.
No, I'm not. I mean, I didn't learn to read until I was ten because my parents didn't understand. Thankfully, I understand, so it's a much easier process. But he's so smart, and I can't, you know, I want to see him go to Harvard, not call community college. So, you know, you've got to do what you've got to do ahead of time.
You know what? You're a great parent, and your son's lucky to have you and his dad. And come back to us and let us know how it all turns out.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Please do. Thank you. Ms. Blocketter?
Dr. Todd Overcash.
William Todd Overcash, 14311 Southeast 128th Street, Ocala, Ohio, Florida, 32179. I really came to address three things today. It's interesting, the case we just heard. We have school psychologists seeing the children. Parents reach out and thinks school psychologists are a good thing. Problem of it is, state of Florida is not unlike most states, but it's unlike very many states. Only two of your child psychologists are licensed psychologists by the Board of Psychology in the state of Florida. The rest are licensed under the school board through the school system. They do not have to pass board certification. However, under states like New York State, when a psychologist is working without a license in the school system, the licensed psychologist has to supervise and review and document the review of each chart and each counseling session of every child with every therapist to make sure it's appropriate. You have sixteen therapists. Only two of them are licensed in the state of Florida. There's no way they do appropriate oversight. It's inappropriate, as I've stated to you one before. One of your therapists has not kept his CMEs up to date, has not paid his fines. I have an issue with that. Number two, so I think that I think you'd be better off getting yourself some licensed psychologists, and the majority of private psychologists would tell you you'd be better off. And when you look at your salary and benefits, you pay unlicensed psychologists, it's equal to what private psychologists make in the community. I think you're ripping the community off. Number two, is a subject that I discovered, I won't say when or where, I'll say when, I won't say what child. It was during a deposition, where it was stated that the child, when he went to a medical clinic inside the school system, his notes were directed to be destroyed, and all they had to do was take a logbook and file date and time of that child arriving. Well, I want to cite several things to you. Number one, under federal law, specifically Act 42 USC 1395 X U, a physician or healthcare provider is anyone, whether it's a therapist, a nurse, a medical records keeper, is considered a healthcare provider under federal law, which overrides state law. Now, I want to cite to you state law. 59A-4.118, medical records must be maintained in their entirety until the child achieves age of twenty-one. You have directed your staff, I don't know who did it, and there's been a discovery request of who gave that direction. You have violated state and federal law. Third, and I hate to do this here, and Ms. Boynton, I apologize to you in advance, you need to immediately resign from this staff, or there should be a recall election immediately. Because under your financial affidavit running for office, you stated your income from the school board?
I'm going to call you out of order, sir, and I understand what you want to speak about, and I'm going to refer why I called you out of order to our attorney, but I am pleased to go anywhere you would like to go to file a complaint if you think I've done something wrong.
It's been filed already with Social Security. You're violating the law.
No, I have not violated the law, sir, and I want you to come back and hear this. I'm willing to go with you to Social Security. You are indeed saying to me something that could be libel or slanderous to me, because I-- thank you. That's all I need from you.
You've called me in public of committing slander. You draw disability from Social Security, and you draw private income beyond.
You're out of order, sir.
Pursuant to the established procedures for public appearance before the Marion County School Board, school board has the right to refuse to broadcast or record any statements which it reasonably considers to be libelous, slanderous, or defamatory. It appears those comments would reasonably fall within that category.
Thank you. Ms. Blocketter?
And Ms. Carolyn Torrey.
My name is Carolyn Torrey. I reside at 1202 Southeast 4 King Street, Southeast 14th Avenue. And my discussion today is my concerns about where the focus is on the safety of the children. I'm not going to name a school board member yet, but I am concerned that the focus on the safety of a child, when it comes down to the safety of a child and the treatment of a child, is still quote-unquote "teacher-union-contract-controlled," and the children are secondary. I'm going to read from you a portion of the deposition from your-- from your-- one of your directors of the employment. "The functions of the Personnel Department are for employment purposes of our employee. They are not about the students." That is page six, and it is filed with the courts. I am very concerned because I thought we were going to try and make where the children are first in this situation and the parents' concerns are addressed. And I do want to commend you on that, the first speaker that you have going out to try and help the child. Now, I have presented to you the police reports about my concerns about a fourth-grade teacher here, and I understand she's still teaching. As parents, we complained. We complained appropriately to the principal, and we, the parents, were attacked. You have the police reports. We also had our concerns about how our children were treated in the classroom by the teacher accusing the children of things they didn't do, and you have an affidavit signed by this teacher that she made false reports to the sheriff's office, and she was retracting them. And that's a certified thing-- a certified statement that your new attorney has just received. He'd received it when he first came there. I gave him a stack of papers. This is not very good for the children psychologically when they're accused of things that they didn't do. I don't like to find out what the results were on the two hundred-- and the state report on the 225 percent over the state rate, which was a quotation from the Florida Department of Education on restraint and seclusion on our disabled children. You know, I know that I saw an article that they had asked the state to come in through each department, and I'd like to see a copy of that report from the state or contact information. I guess I was very bothered today, thinking that we were going to actually make some progress about the focus of the children and that the teacher-union contract would not trump the safety of a child. And I can see that, I don't think we're all the way there yet. I have an email where the principal went to the superintendent of schools that he never reported. He reported everything but about the teacher. And you have that in your-- you have that in your email collection. I haven't named any names, but I can see that we are not there. There was concerns about the teacher and her ability, about her handle of the language. And even the principal had wrote her a letter, and I provided it to your attorney. We have high-stakes fourth graders who will be failed on a test, and yet, we want the most qualified teachers out there. And I'm going to provide Ms. Kelly an email that she probably hasn't been provided with so she can get a little insight at what I've sent to other board members in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Torrey. Ms. Blocketter?
That's what I have, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Jackie Ballas, Science Program Specialist, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and lead us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Boynton. I have two wonderful students who will be introducing the inspiration, and that will be Sarah Perkins from Bellevue High School, and she'll be reading that now. And then when she concludes, we have Tyler Pond from Vanguard High School, who will be leading us in the pledge.
Sarah, it's all yours.
Thank you. Hi, I was asked to read my essay for the Sunshine State Scholar Program. "As America's population rate continues to soar, there's demand to be placed on today's youth to address the future concerns of healthcare, the environment, transportation, and more. I believe how we as a nation are going to respond to these issues is our greatest challenge. America will need more STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, field employees, and information sciences, research, health, computer sciences and engineering, civil engineering, and more. The United States of America is a leader for the rest of this world, and if we want to stay this way, young adults will need to realize that STEM fields pose opportunities and jobs that aren't just beneficial to them but for our country as well. My contribution to this challenge will be to continue my education in the healthcare field and address the needs of a growing and aging population. Through HOSA and future community service clubs in college and beyond, I will help promote an understanding, among others, of the importance of STEM in the multitude of careers in these areas that make a difference. STEM is a national priority. In closing, I would like to quote Jean-Jacques Rousseau, the famous 18th-century Swiss philosopher. He said, "We should not teach children the sciences, but give them a taste for them." With this said, I would like to thank the many teachers that I've had here in the Marion County school system who have given me a taste and thirst for the sciences. Thank you."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to say that I've known Sarah since she was in sixth grade and came to the science fair for the first time. So she's now a junior, so. We have Ms. Knighton here, who is my colleague in math, who's going to be telling us a little bit about the Sunshine State Scholar Program and telling you a little bit about its history and what's in store.
Thank you. Good evening. The Sunshine State Scholar Program initiated in 1998 is designed to recognize high school students who excel in the areas of mathematics and science. Earlier in the school year, each of our high schools was asked to nominate an outstanding junior. Each nominee was required to complete an application package. Included as a part of that package was an essay. A district committee reviewed each application and selected one winner to represent Marion County and an alternate. The selection process involved judging the nominees on their academic achievement in mathematics and science, advanced coursework, community service, participation in STEM competitions, and their thoughtful response on the essay. Selecting one winner was very difficult due to the outstanding quality of each of the nominees. On February 19th and 20th, 2015, Marion County's winner will join other district scholars from across the state in Orlando. These scholars will be recognized for their outstanding achievements at a Florida Department of Education-sponsored recognition banquet. Each district scholar is invited to bring to the recognition ceremony their parents and a teacher who has had significant influence on them. At this time, we would like to recognize the individual school candidates and Marion County Sunshine State Scholar. From Westport High School, Virginia Scott. From North Marion High School, Sidney Vaden. From Marion Technical High School, Isaiah Henry. From Forest High School, Dirk Stein. From Don Ellen High School, Michaela Frazier. From Vanguard High School and Marion County's alternate, Tyler Poon. From Bellevue High School and the Marion County Sunshine State Scholar for 2014-15, Ms. Sarah Perkins. Please acknowledge these scholars.
Parents, please stand so we can thank you.
I want to say to your students, I am so proud of you, and I want to congratulate you, and you are what we can say, in spite of all the reports about schools and students not achieving, you show it differently, and I thank you so much. Congratulations, and keep up the good work.
Congratulations, Don Ellen. Very proud of you.
And now y'all get to smile.
Sure.
This is a great honor for these students, and it will really grate on all those college applications that I know you're going to be filling out really soon, so congratulations again.
Mr. Superintendent?
Board members, with the exception of J.D. 15-27 under item SD 32, which has been withdrawn, I recommend approval of the agenda for the December 9th, 2014 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Some of them.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. May I have a-- may I have a motion to approve the minutes for November 6th, 2014 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, November 11th, 2014 School Board Meeting, November 18th, 2014 School Board Meeting Organizational, November 18th, 2014 School Board Leasing Corporation Organization. Do I have a motion and a second, please?
Send it. A second.
Moved by Mrs. Kelly and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? Here none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, Board. Mrs. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, is here to recognize a special donation for kindergarten students. Mrs. Zanetti?
Well, good evening once again, board members. Good evening, Superintendent Tomlin. I'm excited to be here. I always like to take the opportunity to show you how the Public Education Foundation is working to connect children, classrooms, and community. And tonight, I'm here to talk about a grant that we received from the Junior League of Ocala. And unfortunately, the Junior League board members that were supposed to be here tonight had something come up but weren't able to make it, but I still want to share with you the project that we did together. And the project started over a year ago with the kindergarten teachers from Wyamina Park Elementary School. They wrote a Grants for Great Idea for Kinder Toolkit, and it was funded through the foundation, and it was such a success at Wyamina Park that we wanted to be able to share this with other elementary schools. So each year, the Junior League of Ocala does a Community Impact Grant, and I applied for that grant, and we were awarded $8,000 to buy supplies for and pack 750 kindergarten toolkits. And I'll show you what's in the toolkits in just a moment. First, I wanted to let you know, I wrote these down so I didn't forget, the schools that received our toolkits this year were Anthony Elementary School, Bellevue Elementary, Evergreen Elementary, Pheasant Elementary, Romeo Elementary, Sunrise Elementary, and Wyamina Park Elementary. And Wyamina was chosen since they started the project, and the other schools were chosen based on academic need. And we actually were able to even pack enough toolkits to provide them to the pre-K students at Romeo Elementary School. Now, the beauty of the toolkit project is that students or parents do not receive the toolkit until they come to a parent meeting at the school. So they come, they meet with their kindergarten teachers and the school staff and the reading coach, and they show them how to use the supplies in the bag to help their students at home. So each toolkit was packed in one of these lovely drawstring bags with a Junior League of Ocala logo on the front, and inside, we got lots of great things for the students to use at home. They've got their crayons, they have their composition book, there are lots of flashcards with scissors and bags for them to cut up. They have numbers, letters. They have numbers, letters, sight words, and ten frames for, for mathematics skills. Each student received their own book. There were parent directions provided for each of these supplies, and they also received their magnetic letters and numbers and a cookie sheet. And so the parents were shown how they can do fluency and vocabulary phonics with their students at home using the supplies in this toolkit. If a parent wasn't able to make it to the parent night, then they were able to schedule a parent-teacher conference and come in individually to get that instruction with their toolkit. But this is just a, a great example of how the community is working, and in this case, the Junior League of Ocala, is working to make sure that our students have the skills necessary for success. And I also want to applaud our teachers and the school staff that gave of their own time to be there in the evenings and to do this program for the parents. So thank you for allowing me to be here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Zanetti. That is such a wonderful tool for parents and our kids. And does any other board member have to comment?
What a great start for our kinders. I hope that it can expand to more schools.
It would be great. It would be great. I'm going to pack my toolkit up so I don't lose anything before I head out of here because somebody can use this. But thank you for allowing me to be here. I'll see you after the holidays. Yes, sir?
Pass the word to the Junior League. We really appreciate what they do.
I will.
And they've been doing it for years at various schools. And this is a, an example of what they do that can be satellite to our, to our other schools. So on behalf of all of us, thank them, and we tell them we surely miss them.
And I should mention that they not only funded the toolkits, they came and volunteered their time to pack them up for us as well. So that was a great advantage, so.
Seven hundred and fifty.
That's a lot. It was way more than I imagined it to be in my mind, so. I wish y'all a Merry Christmas, and I'll see you after the holidays. Thank you.
Same to you. Board, board members, may I have a motion to adopt a resolution on school accountability?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Stacy.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ely. Do we have any discussion? All those in.
I am not in the proper location, Stacy. Okay, the motion was by.
Moved by Mrs. Stacy, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Thank you. Mr. Kevin Christian, Public Relations Office and TV Media Productions Coordinator, please come forward and read the resolution.
This is a little lengthier than a typical board resolution, so bear with me here. This resolution is entitled Resolution on School Accountability. Whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida is committed to providing a high-quality public education system that prepares all students for college, careers, citizenship, and lifelong learning, and strengthens the nation's social and economic well-being. Whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida is required by state statute and state Board of Education rule to participate in Florida statewide assessment programs which utilize high-stakes standardized testing of students to drive decision-making for students, teachers, administrators, schools, and school districts. Whereas a fair, reliable, and valid assessment program and accountability system is necessary to assess student growth and the effectiveness of teachers, administrators, and schools. Whereas the School Board of Marion County, Florida supports an assessment program that informs instruction and measures student growth, a system that has been adequately field-tested in Florida schools with Florida students in order to reduce bias and ensure valid and reliable measurement of Florida student performance. Whereas all components of Florida's assessment and accountability system were not fully developed by the beginning of the 2014-15 school year to provide adequate time to inform educators, students, and stakeholders to prepare for professional development and to make curriculum decisions and revisions. Whereas the state of Florida has enacted an unfunded and unreasonable mandate requiring each school district to create and implement hundreds of end-of-course exams for every subject offered to students, and then use those assessments to measure student learning and teacher effectiveness. Whereas the increased demands placed on district information technology infrastructure by the expansion of statewide computer-based testing have disrupted technology-based instruction, interfering with students' access to digital learning on an ongoing basis. Whereas multiple changes to Florida's school accountability system over the past three years have caused teachers, administrators, parents, and community members to lose confidence in the school grading system. And whereas the state of Florida has failed to demonstrate that the state assessment programs, which have not been field-tested in Florida schools, are able to provide valid and reliable data necessary to support the accountability measures for which the assessments are used, therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Marion County, Florida calls on Governor Scott, the Florida Legislature, and the school, excuse me, the State Board of Education to initiate the following solutions. Number one, provide a three-year transition to invest in the complete development of all components required for a high-quality, valid, reliable, and defensible statewide assessment and accountability system. Number two, further, the Florida Legislature should delay the use of Florida Standards Assessment results in determining school grades, student promotion, retention, or graduation, and teacher-administrator performance evaluation and compensation through performance pay until July 1st, 2017. Number three, adopt a comprehensive opt-out policy that would allow parents to have their students excused without penalty from statewide standardized or state-required assessments. Number four, in the interim, school districts should be given flexibility to set their own criteria for these decisions. However, the state of Florida should continue to provide appropriate assessments for students to meet graduation test requirements. Further, during this transition, the use of state student assessment data should be used solely for diagnostic purposes, creating a baseline for use in 2017 and 2018. And number five, urges the governor of the state of Florida to exercise his executive authority and protect the well-being of Florida's students and the legitimacy of Florida's education system by immediately providing a process for public school parents and students to be excused without penalty from participation in the statewide required assessments. Personally signed and dated this ninth day of December, 2014, in Marion County by each of you are five elected school board members.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Board members, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes. Thank you, board members. May I have a motion to adopt a revised job classification description for behavior analysts? I have, need a motion and a second, please.
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mrs. King. Mrs. King, thank you. Mr. Superintendent.
Board members, this job classification description has been revised for compliance with certification requirements and for consistency of our job classification descriptions.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised job classification description? Thank you. Any discussion, board? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. May I have a motion to adopt a rejob, revised job classification description for behavior specialists?
Some move.
Moved by Mrs. Ely.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent.
Board members, this job classification description has been revised for compliance with certification requirements and for consistency of our job classification descriptions.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised job classification description? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes, and thank you, board. May I have a motion to adopt a revised job classification description for food service worker?
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent.
Board members, this job classification description has been revised due to outsourcing custodial services. Since there are no custodians to clean the cafeteria tables after meals, the responsibility has been shifted to the food service staff. Additional information has been added for consistency in job classification descriptions.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised job classification description?
Yes, speakers.
All, board members, all those in favor, please vote aye. Say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. May I have a motion to adopt the 2014-15 Student Progression Plan?
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
Board members, the annual adoption of the Student Progression Plan reflects changes in legislation and clarifies language concerning student progression in Marion County.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the 2014-15 Student Progression Plan?
Speakers, thank you.
Board members, all those in.
I would like to have some discussion.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Mrs. Stacy.
Yes, I would like for someone to speak with me, Mrs. Stewart, Mrs. Brewer, I'm sorry. I have some questions. In going over this this afternoon, I saw on page thirty-four, if you go on page thirty, and I know you don't have it by memory, but it talks about the good cause exemptions for mandatory third grade, and it has one, two, three, four, five, six, and then we've added a seven that wasn't in last year's progression plan. And it says that the port, that it's about the portfolio, that's why I'm concerned, because parents can request a portfolio. And so it says that they can request this, and there's a process to do it when information is available from the state. A parent can request that the school begin collecting evidence for a portfolio. What do you mean when it, when it's, there's information from the state?
So with the new standards, the state has historically provided guidance as to what is required in the portfolio as a good cause exemption for third-grade retention. We haven't received clarification from the state for exactly what they'll require in the portfolio. Historically, it has been three pieces of evidence. We're waiting for Just Read Florida to provide information for us, but in order to have the Student Progression Plan in place, we put that language in to give us the, the coverage when clarification finally comes from the state.
Okay, are you talking about the technical assistance paper?
No, I'm referring to specifically what is required in the portfolio. The technical assistance paper is addressed in the Student Progression Plan, but there, it doesn't address the specifics of what the state is going to require in the student portfolio, only that a parent can request it. And we've always recommended to our schools that they start portfolios very early in the school year, but we have to require, or we have to wait on, on the state to tell us this is what we will accept as evidence of a student mastering the standards.
Okay, and reading the, the technical assistance paper that we received, that was put out on October the 24th, which is actually a month earlier than last year's technical assistance paper, it's pretty much the same where it talks about the, you know, as I'm reading through it, where it speaks about the, the requests for the portfolios, and it refers us back to a rule, and that rule.
State board.
Six A.
State board rule does guide the use of portfolios. However, what the Department of Education provides us with is more explicit information of what is required to be within the specific portfolio. The, the portfolio that we used last year was aligned to the Sunshine State standards, Next Generation Sunshine State standards. This year, retention will be based on mastery of the Florida standards. So there are differences in what's required within the portfolio, as well as what's required as far as testing protocols. We don't have any type of concordance score. There's been no ruling on what, what proficiency would look like with SAT-10 or another nationally-normed reference test. So until we have that information, we can't lay forth the guidelines of the portfolio. And believe me, we, as well as every other district in the state, when we go to our state meetings, we have been clamoring for additional information on the portfolio because our schools need it to put their feet on the ground in order to be certain of the evidence that they're collecting. We're making recommendations, and those recommendations are based on best practice from DOE. However, there's nothing come out in ruling as far as these are the specifics that will be required in the portfolio. So as soon as we get that, and DOE has promised us December, so we're in December now, and typically, we wait until the very last day and we hinge on pins and needles. So as soon as we get that clarification from DOE, we will have the portfolio in place. But it doesn't, it doesn't prohibit a parent from requesting a portfolio. It doesn't do anything but kind of keep the school on, on pins and needles as far as waiting for the requirements of the evidence.
Okay, so then when our student, because I'm understanding that some of the tests that our students are taking, we're having only a thirty to forty percent pass rate on some of these benchmark tests, which concerns me that we're going to have some third-grade issues at the end of the, at the end of the year.
There, there's not a single assessment that we're using as evidence of, of mastery. Typically, we're asking teachers to keep portfolio records on the students, so you can have anecdotal evidence of mastery of some of the standards. Some of them can't even be really assessed by a test per se, because some of them are speaking in listening skills, because that's how ELA is, is, you know, assessed now.
Right.
So some of them are observations that teachers make. What we have done is we've provided a very generic guideline with, that, that states the standards that students are to show mastery on.
So you've got something for the, so the teachers have been told something to keep up with, because I ran, I popped over to St. John County in Sarasota and looked, and they didn't really have this, this clause in theirs that they were seeing to be having any problems. They seem to have a portfolio, um, putting in place, and just looking at their websites to see what they were doing for this.
Well, I can tell you, everyone in the state is waiting on specific clarification from DOE to have the specifics.
So we can start, we can collect stuff.
Absolutely.
There just might be some very specific stuff that we don't have.
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that we are working towards that.
Absolutely, and, and we've been working with our assistant principals and our principals to go through different types of documentation and formatting that they can look at to make it as easy as possible for that classroom teacher. That classroom teacher, it has the burden of the evidence, and we're trying to make that as seamless and as easy as possible for the classroom teacher, because we want them spending their time instructing students. So when you look at flexibility and offering variety of what is the evidence and what qualifies as appropriate evidence for standards mastery, those are very big conversations, and schools want guidance on that.
Okay, but what I have a problem with is that number seven, where it speaks about the portfolio, and it says when information is available from the state. It doesn't matter if information is available from the state, we have to provide a portfolio. And we have to have that means of testing for some of the third graders that don't pass their test.
We have the portfolio in place. What we're saying is it may shift some once we get information from the state. So if you would like that phrase some other way, we can certainly do that, but remember when we came to work session and we went over the Student Progression Plan?
Just picked this up.
We, we provided a list of all of the people who have worked embedded this document. So that's why, that's why we try to bring it to you during work sessions, so when it comes time for approval here in front of the board, we're good to go. And so, so all of the edits and things were, were in place at that time.
Well, there was, it was just this afternoon, I was going back over it, and you know how sometimes when you look at something like the tenth time, things start to jump out. And I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, we're going on the record here to say that we're not going to look at parents and say, oh, we don't have information from the state, and our, and our progression plan states that we have that option.
We're doing portfolios right now. And if the state comes back and says, hey, by the way, we want you to add this piece in, we just want to make sure that the progression plan covers us in case that, in case that happens.
Okay, and I was looking at page twenty-two also.
Okay.
And it speaks about physical education. And it talks about that, you know, our progression plan says that we are, last year's plan, talking about it under school schedules on page twenty-two. It talks about a hundred and fifty minutes of physical education per week. And I just want to make sure, I don't want to end up in some kind of class action lawsuit or something from parents saying, oh, no, you know. lawsuit or something from parents saying, oh, no, you know, this isn't happening, and, you know, you quote the statute, but when I go pull the statute itself, it goes on to say, it says a hundred and fifty minutes per week, but then it also says, since you quoted state statute, that it is thirty consecutive minutes per day. It's not like, you know, twice a week or something like that. And I just want to make sure, since it is in our progression plan, and we say that we're doing it, that each elementary student in our school system is receiving thirty minutes a day phys ed. Um, and I also understand that it can be done by, um, you know, a PE teacher can oversee curricula, but I would assume we would have some kind of documented curricula that the teachers are using to do this.
We do, we have maps that teachers teach by. With the reduction in force and things like that, the progression plan addresses what's required by statute, which is the hundred and fifty minutes per week.
Thirty minutes a day.
A hundred, no less than thirty minutes per day, which is correct.
At least thirty minutes per day.
And, and we work with our schools to make sure that they are following the letter of the law. Now, what we do offer is some flexibility into how that instruction is delivered, and the law allows for that. So, we want to make sure that the Student Progression Plan not only supports statute, but also reinforces the flexibility that we need to offer our schools in order to meet all of the demands that are required by statute.
Right, and I just want to make sure, and, you know, you're an elementary teacher. Are the students at the elementary schools getting thirty minutes of PE each day?
Well, I can't speak for every school.
For your school that you're at. I mean, you're, you know, you have this information, I don't.
Right. Um, I would, I think maybe it might be worth maybe doing a little investigation, and maybe have, uh, teachers, maybe keep record each week of how many minutes of PE they're getting. You know, that might be something to look into.
Is it possible that we're not doing that? It's just, it's the school that you're at, thirty minutes a day.
I'll have to think about that, I, because health is included in that also.
Absolutely, health is part of that curriculum.
Right.
And that can certainly be part of that thirty minutes.
Right.
Because it talks about, you know, ex, physical education and that sort of thing. It goes on.
There are specific standards that are associated with each of the PE course codes, and within those standards, it identifies all of the different things that students should be exposed to. Health is part of that. Health might be delivered in more of a classroom setting versus being outside, doing activities outside, but as long as you're meeting and teaching the standards, that's what's required by statute.
And so, health, there's a standard on the physical education?
Health is part of the physical education program and standards that are offered.
Okay. Um, my question though, is it should be done thirty minutes every day, or it's combined for the week?
No, thirty minutes every day by the state statute.
What, what statute says is in increments no smaller than thirty minutes.
Daily, yeah. I think we should investigate that then for schools.
Okay, I'd like to have you follow up on this for me, because if we're putting it in our plan that we're doing it, then we need to be doing it. And we had it all last year, and, um, the teachers, I spoke to a couple of teachers this afternoon, and they do not agree that this is happening. And it also says that someone besides a certified PE teacher can do it, but she has to, all physical education programs and curriculum must be reviewed by a certified PE educator, education instructor. And so, this is not something we can just tell the teachers, just do jumping jacks or whatever. Someone is supposed to be overseeing this curricula at each school.
Correct.
That they're getting thirty minutes a day. Um, so I assume, you know, Mrs. King, you had some type of curricula or something that you were going by in your classroom?
Well, I would.
Or your own?
I would, well, of course, I would be with my physical education teacher, and I would just kind of assist. And then, we would have the PE guide, or?
Every day?
Well, then, it wouldn't, I wouldn't say we had the thirty minutes daily.
How much would you say?
Well, I would have to think about it.
So, I, I, well, and I think, I think we're dealing with two separate issues. So, tonight, what's before the board is to approve the Student Progression Plan as is stated after we had a work session, and after we had it open for public comment and a, and public hearing. And then, if you have concerns about fidelity of implementation, that's really something entirely different. So, if that is, if, if the direction of the board is to look at, and, and look at the fidelity of implementation, we can certainly do that, but that wouldn't change us having to approve a Student Progression Plan that aligns with state statute. So, if there are questions about fidelity of implementation, that, to me, is, is a separate thing, and if you're directing that we do that, we can absolutely do that. That's not a problem. But as far as tonight and the direction of the board, what's before you is a Student Progression Plan that is, that is written to meet the requires, the requirements of state statute. And we need that in place in order to have guidelines for student progression a, as directed by statute. So, there, there's two, there's two things going on, and I want to make sure we keep those, those things clear.
Thank you, Mrs. Brewer.
And I'm still a little bit concerned about that number seven, where it says, um, you know, there, regarding the portfolio.
What would you like it to say? What exactly is causing you concern?
Just, when information is available from the state, I just don't believe that's acceptable, because I believe.
Do you want it to say as information is available from the state?
Just that, I mean, they, the parents of students identified at risk grade will be notified in writing of the criteria policy for a portfolio, and evidence required for students to demonstrate mastery of grade, as information is available from the state. I like better than when, because it sounds like we may not be able to do that, and I think we have to do that, and I don't want us to say.
Right, and we will do that as soon as we have that information from the state, but we don't want to notify a parent and, and tell them, oh, your child, we're looking at retention on your student, and the state tell us, oh, here's the criteria that we want you to use, and it's, and the student's now really not even in danger. That creates a completely different set of circumstances that we may not really need to, to do. We are certainly on top of knowing what our students are doing, who's at risk of, of not passing, we're having those conversations and.
I like, you said, you said the word as. I like better than when, because when can mean, um.
We can certainly change the preposition.
If, if information comes from the state. But information will come from the state, and I would appreciate if we could just amend this to say as information. I like that verbiage that you just shared.
We can certainly change the preposition.
Because that doesn't, that means it is coming, but not when, like indefinitely, it might not, is kind of a word that.
But that really, it, it is out of our control.
But.
So, it, I mean.
But when information is available from the state, I just, I think your word as, information is available from the state covers it a lot better, because the word when almost sounds to me like it might not be available at all.
We, we can do whatever you like.
I don't know, I would just like to amend it to say as.
You all can vote, and we're at the, we're at the mercy of the board.
You're offering an amendment to replace when in item seven, page thirty-four, with as.
With as.
I, we need a, so.
Can I have a second, please, on, on changing the word on page thirty-four, item seven, from when to as?
Okay, I'll second.
All right, it's been properly moved.
Just for clarification, so it doesn't sound.
It's been properly moved, second. Do, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right.
Do we vote on that amendment?
Uh, Ms. Brewer.
Just a moment, Mr. James, Mrs. Brewer.
Ms. Brewer, one of the things, now, in order for a kid to use his portfolio, he has to take, take the assessments test, is that correct, ma'am?
There, there are two options. What DOE has told us initially in state meetings is, a student must take the third-grade FSA in order to be considered as a portfolio student. If they do not take it at all, they are looking at retention. That was the last meeting that we had with the state. We don't have a choice in that. So, if a student comes to school, or it, or parent keeps the, the child home, if, if the parent keeps the child home, we're looking at mandatory retention on a third-grade student.
Okay, I just want to make sure we got that out there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer, and Mrs. Chris Sacco, I do recognize you, and, but first, I'd like to hear from Ms. Flockheder.
I just need Mrs. King to vote on the amendment, so we can get that off the floor. I apologize. Sorry.
All right, Mrs. Chris Sacco, please.
I have clarification on the expectation for minutes of PE in a week, if you'd like to share that with me.
Yes.
That's fine, if you want to do that.
You want to turn this up first?
I just, you just announced that, the vote on that.
I just, while I was listening, pulled up statute ten zero three point four five five that's talking about physical education requirements, and in subsection three, it says, each district school board shall provide one hundred and fifty minutes of physical education each week for students in kindergarten through grade five. That's the expectation for K five. It goes on then and says, and it's very confusing when it does this, but it says, and for students in grade six who are enrolled in a school that contains one or more elementary grades, so that any, that on any day during which physical education instruction is conducted, there are at least thirty consecutive minutes per day. When you're dealing with sixth grade.
That flips around.
We, we sometimes do an A-day schedule and a B-day schedule, and they might have PE one day and not the next day, and they usually have it for double the amount of time on the A-day, and they don't have it at all on the B-day. So, I think that's the confusion, but for the elementary K five, it's a hundred and fifty minutes per week, nothing per day required.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Chris Sacco.
And one, one other piece, when, when teachers have elementary certification, that certifies them for art, music, and PE. So, all elementary certified teachers can teach their own music, can teach their own PE, and their own art.
So, it doesn't have to be a certified PE teacher, like it says?
Only at the secondary level, it, it would be, but for the elementary level, that's what that elementary certification does.
Well, it says, pre-kindergarten through grade twelve, it's under that section on number one. It doesn't matter, we're going to go through it at another time anyway.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And board members, I recommend if you, if you need any additional clarification, to have a, to schedule a meeting with, with Mrs. Brewer for any, you know, any different, additional information. And, and we're going to be voting on this as amended, so all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
May.
We have, the motion passes four to one.
That, that, the motion four to one was for the, the motion.
The amendment, and amendment, the motion passed four to one, and now, we just, we just went through the.
Now, you're voting.
Yes.
Okay, then I change.
All right.
I don't know if Brenda heard you. Did she hear?
It's already there.
Okay, the motion to amend, you voted against.
Right.
But for the motion to approve the plan as amended, you're voting for.
Right.
All right, okay. And Mrs. Ely and Mrs. Stacy.
I did the same thing.
And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So, move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mrs. Kelly. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? Two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars to Bellevue High School from Bellevue High School Girls Basketball Boosters Club. Four thousand and twelve dollars and ninety-six cents to Emerald Shores Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation. One thousand five hundred dollars to Forest High School from Bright House Networks LLC. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from Bank of the Ozarks. Three thousand dollars to Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from Southwest Florida Water Management District. Four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars to Reddick Cario Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation. I have a motion and a second, please.
So, moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. King, and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the mo, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Like sign, likewise? So.
Oh, what did that pass? And I haven't voted. I can't, I didn't get it up on it. You didn't get that?
Uh, right, okay. Okay. All right. And the motion passes five zero. At this time, I'm going to ask Kelly King to thank our donors.
I do, I just want to say, how wonderful is it that Marion County Schools received over sixteen thousand dollars? That is just wonderful. And with that being said, I would just like to say that, um, we are grateful and thankful that we have business members of our community that are invested in our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. King.
Board members, um, please keep these meeting reminders, and adjust your schedule accordingly. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, January the eighth, at two thousand fifteen at nine AM. The purpose of the work, work session is to receive orientation for the newly seated board and attorney, review for the highlights and temper walk zoning boundaries, liberty, middle lease with, with the county parks and recreations, develop our legislative agenda, determine areas of interest and concerns for two thousand and fifteen, fifteen, and continue discussion on our mileage oversight committee. After the morning session on, on January the eighth, there will be a lunch break with the work session reconvening at one PM to review current status of the staffing plan and budget, so make sure you schedule your entire day for that. Upon adjournment of tonight's meeting, an executive session will be held to discuss union negotiations. An addition, an additional executive session to, to contend, to the continued discussion of union negotiations will be held after the January the thirteenth, two thousand fifteen board meeting. Make sure you adjust your calendar, Ms. Flocks, please. And board members, at this time, do you have any comments or concerns? But before you do, I'm going to go down, I'm going to ask those who attended the FSBA conference to give us some highlights, you know, of, of what you felt and what, what the workshops you went through. So, I'm going to start with Mr. James at the end.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chairman. One of the things that was, was very important, ma'am, was the opening session. And the opening session of the work session and the general topic really touched on some things that we are working, we are working on, and that was when we looked at the, the balance scorecard, the information that we, we, we want and we need from, from our school district in order to be in line, or in tune with what is actually occurring. We talked in terms of the fact that we're coming up on a midterm. On midterm, we are seeking information to determine the, the direction that we are going. The one thing that I was enlightened by, more than anything else, was the fact that how they were using data to identify the needs of students, and what we can do at this particular point in time to make sure that the kids are, are moving in the direction of student achievement, high student achievement. They did give us some breakdown on the demographic groups in terms of, of their performance, the Hispanic, the African-American, and the white kids as they, as they move through this process. So, the information that they've, that they, that is being provided at that work session are the things that we felt that we needed to get here. One of the things I know that we sparked, talked about was the, the involvement in, of teachers in the assessment of what is occurring at our schools, the lead teachers and things like that, so that was important. I know that the other board members had some things, so I'm going to leave one or two for you. And one of the things that I want y'all to talk about is Lee County.
You don't want us to talk about it?
I want y'all to talk about it, because they're going to say Bobby James, you hogging the thunder, but I think all of us had an opportunity to go in and sit there and listen to how we got in this mess with, with Lee County and things like that. And, uh, one of the other things that I, we divided up at the end, and Kelly, you owe me one, because I, I went to, we divided up on. 'cause I, I went to, we divided up on, on, on the events that we attended, so we could cover a lot of the sessions. And one of the ones that we went, I went to was the one where we called for engagement of the school board in, in terms of engagement of schools. And one of the things I found real interesting about engagement was the fact that school members, school board members should at some point visit the schools that they represent in a, on a regular basis to get engaged. And when I say get engaged, the thing that I found real interesting was the fact that board members would have a set schedule as they would visit the various schools around to be engaged in what is actually occurring. So I, I would encourage everybody to, if you got your schools, to get engaged with them, and that was one of the key things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James, that was very interesting. And Mrs. King?
Yes, I enjoyed the experience, and I had a lot of opportunities to meet a lot of nice members and also members in other communities and, and counties, and we can learn a lot from them. But as Mr. James, when we were splitting up that afternoon, I went to a meeting on developing new teachers and mentoring them, and there was a lot of good valuable information from Saint Lucy, so maybe sometime I could share that information and ideas with some of you guys there. And also, not only for the mentor, or the mentors, but for the rookie teachers, but for veteran teachers, they had great ideas how to keep them involved at a pretty decent price, so it was a good experience.
Thank you. Mrs. Stacy?
Well, I'm enjoying getting an overview of what y'all did, and I do my crash course, I'd like for you to go, and I'd like to leave nine hundred dollars in the district, because y'all can come back and tell me what you did, and I can just kinda relive it with you. So, thank you.
It's nothing like being there.
I've been there before.
One time.
I've been there before. I got plenty.
All right, Mrs. Ely?
Okay, I went to a lot of great courses, I met members from other districts, several of them complimented us on the, the tax referendum, and wanted to know how we did it. And then there were other counties who were able to, to get it and were excited, they burned it three or four times, right, Ms. Kelly, and Ms. King? And then we had a, the ethics training, I know is long, it's a four-hour training, but I did learn a lot during that training, the stuff that I didn't get last year, and it was conducted by three ethics attorneys, and there were a lot of good question, good questions posed at the end where people were able to come up and ask the attorneys specific questions that were just very relative to Marion County, you know, I could, I could relate to a lot of that. I also went to a, an excellent session on Thursday, hot legal topics, litigation updates, sovereign immunity, which we're involved in, protecting and preserving our schools. Many of these were conducted by attorneys from their school district, but you just learn an awful lot that you just can't read in a book, but it was, it was excellent, it was a long week, and the sessions ran from morning till late afternoon, but I'm, I enjoyed the experience of going, and I feel like it was good staff development for school board members.
Okay, board, I'm, I'm really pleased to, to hear all the positive reports, and I, I brought back a stack of information, of course, because I do believe the more information we have, the better informed we can be as a board, but there were so many different things going on at this work session that we had, and I thought that it was, to me, was one of the best ones. I did go to the chair training, you know, the one where school board chairs have to learn and train or highly be a good chair, so I'm, I'm gonna try to master that, that's one of my goals. The mo, I don't, the most important session I went through too was the one on high-stakes testing, and it must've been so important to everyone else because the room was packed, I had to sit out the door, you know, and so I would just, you know, run up to see if I really heard that right, and go back and sit, and, and really got from it that there, there was very, there was trying to bring some unity across the state, that we all speak in one voice, you know, about it. I do know when, and I did, of course, I, I, you didn't talk about the D.O.E., the state's chair, her work session.
No, we didn't.
One of the, one of the things that we were told is to prepare our students, our parents, for this coming school gradings, you know, that, and I said to myself, well, you know, maybe I should leave that to the superintendent, but then, of course, we know it will fall back on the board. Prepare you all just in case those scores go down, it's because they don't really have all the tools in place to really give us a, a good school grade, and I'm sure Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Thomas, you can explain it a little bit better than I can, but they don't have all the necessary tools there. They want us to prepare, so I think as board members, as we go to our schools, we should talk to our PTA, you know, talk to our principals to make sure that the message gets out to parents and to our community, and when those grades come out, it will not be a positive, it will not be a reflection, a true reflection of what's going on in our schools. That is so key, and it, 'cause we both know, we all see all the success stories, we have more success stories than negative, you know? And I know you're doing such a fine job, Mr. Superintendent. Now, the one course that I went to was the ethics, and I brought you your folder back. I know you may not need it, but this is to be a part of us, so you see what we got.
I checked it online.
But you didn't get that folder?
Oh, yeah. I get everything, I get the same stuff y'all get.
Okay, so I bought a lot of material back, and one of them was the amazing results in Gadsden County of how their students went from being the lowest of seven counties to number three in the state. So I'm gonna share this with, I told our superintendent that as I got the information, I was sharing it with him, and there was also an opportunity there for me to speak with public service, public broadcasting service, they have some tools for teachers for digital that are free, so I bought that information back also, and also bought back information on the food service management, not that we need it, but I made sure that we had some information, so this is for,
Thank you.
This is for you.
Thank you.
And this is also, there was a school board member there that did a lot of work on parental involvement and how to do it, so she gave me this, and she wrote a book on it, and it's been acclaimed, so I thought, well, let me just bring it back.
Is she the one from Gadsden County?
She's from, you know, I didn't ever ask her what county she was from, but I just, I mean, we spent,
Little small lady?
Little small lady, we spent a long time together talking and sharing, and I was, I think one of the highlights of this,
Do you have a TV or?
Yeah, she's from a small county, but one of the highlights is, is, is just like Ms. King said, the networking, being, getting, being able to listen to other counties and, you know, how we feel for what's going on there, and we may be, you know, going through the same problems, so this is for you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. James?
One of the things that I, I'd like for everybody just to notice here, that each one of us got a, a piece of it.
Yes.
Each one of us got a, a piece of it and it make us whole. And the thing about the engagement is what everybody was saying when we sat and listened to the Commission of Education warn us and tell us how we need to engage our people so that they will know what to expect. I thought that was so interesting. But I think we skipped a part of Lee County presentation.
Yeah, we did.
The Lee County presentation.
The superintendent.
Did you get the superintendent?
The superintendent from Lee County really did an outstanding job of explaining to the, the state of Florida how we got into this predicament in terms of that, and they, and that, and why they reversed courses and things, reversed their course. And she did indicate to me that, indicated to us three, we were, we were in the room, that it was one of those things where you had a school board member that really had another agenda other than what was actually occurring, and they presented something to the board, and then they got a second, and then they got a, a majority, and the next day, they realized what had occurred. And, and when, what had occurred was they had passed something that had so many different ramifications, and they were not prepared to, to take on all of that, the loss of funding and things like that. The superintendent from that county really did an outstanding job of getting their, getting their school di, district back on four, on, on course. And the thing that I really liked about what she said, she said, "We started a ripple throughout the state. Our intent was not to create in something that all of us would have to, to really deal with." But she also pointed out the fact that in order for us to get our, our hands on something, in terms of opting out, one of the things she said, "We need to have in, in our, in place where we want to really push our legislators to opt out of things that are not being tested as of, you know, that's not counting in our grades, opt out on those particular things." Because when we really look at it, we're not prepared to do that, but we're not, we're not prepared to take those exams, but we're not prepared for what the consequences of opting out of those exams. And that led to the question, if you don't take the test, will your portfolio, you still can have your portfolio? When I think in terms of the knits and the pieces that we had, it was, it was really great, it was really great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Superintendent did attend the conference, and do you have any comments for us?
Yes, I did, and I had a good time working with you and also dining with you, seems to be most of our time was spent eating there. We had the opportunity as superintendents to also meet and to go to some of the same sessions that you did. Our focus at this time was meeting with D.O.E. and also meeting with a legislative, a group of legislators. I think what you're going to hear in the very, very near future is a lot of discussion in reference to the type of assessments that we're giving and what the volume of assessments that we're giving. The legislators told us that their intent was not to do the extreme amount of testing. D.O.E. has told us also, we're not sure what the legislators want us to do, because as you know, the legislators pass a law, and D.O.E. then interprets those laws and gives us the appropriate application of those laws. I read today a six or seven-page letter from Senator Don Gates, Senator Gates is the, I think, the Senate President this year, asking Mrs. Stewart, our Commissioner, to respond to some things. So there is some, I'll use the term finger pointing going on right now, but I, I hope that those legislators and D.O.E. personnel are able to get together and work through this process and then give districts some direction. Superintendents, we're still a little confused after listening to D.O.E. and listening to our legislators, we got some mixed messages, and we have been promised that, that we will be getting some clarification on that, and we're looking forward to that, I can assure you.
Do you have any more comments?
I have additional comments, I didn't know whether you need to go through, go through the board tonight, with the other board comments, any other comments?
Have y'all done all your comments? Miss Stacy?
Oh, no.
Miss Stacy?
I would just like to say thank you to Chairman, Mrs. Boynton. It looks like you're gonna be a workhorse chairman, and you're gonna keep us busy, and that's long overdue in this district. I wanna thank you for scheduling, slipping a nice workshop in and loading it up, because I'm ready to go to work. Thank you.
I'm not gonna take all the credit for that, 'cause the superintendent, he, he, he said, he heard, and he said it before me, and we both said, yes, let's do it, and I'm really proud that we can say that our superintendent listens to us, and we listen to him, I hope, you know, because that's our job, if we listen to one another, we can really accomplish a lot, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, I do have some additional comments, thank you for the, for your, for the time here. I'd like to remind all our board members that, that one of our jobs, I think, is to help make you better board members, and when constituents might call you with an issue or a problem, we would request that you call us and, and, and give us an opportunity to explain that to you, so you can then in turn explain it to your constituents. We don't need to come on T.V. and make accusations against various departments, things like that, so share your information with me if you have any questions or concerns, we can be better prepared to answer your questions, whether it be at a work session, whether it be in person, or here on television, I'd appreciate that, and, and many of you do that already. You all heard tonight also from one of my Sunshine State scholars speak about her involvement in the STEM movement, science, technology, engineering, and math. We have partners, Marion County School System is partners with a number of initiatives, and next week, we've been invited by Congressman Ted Yoho to participate in a, a seminar, we do have representatives attending that, I didn't know whether you might have received an invitation or information about that, but I'm very pleased that we'll be participating in that. You might've read something in the newspaper, heard a little bit about, Marion County Public Schools also partnered with the Health Department this year, and a new program this year in which we administered with parent permission, the flu-mist vaccine to many of our students, kindergarten through twelfth-grade students. This year, we vaccinated successfully, I guess is the right word, two thousand six hundred and fifty-seven students, again with parent permission. We were shooting for five percent, this was actually six percent, this is the first year we've done it. A lot of folks did a lot of hard work, from teachers organizing to administrators to health clinic assistants organizing that, and, and we're pleased that they were able to do that for, for, for our students. We hope that it will improve our attendance, and we hope we started something that we can do in the future. Board members that, that attended the F.S.B.A. convention, and I'll also, this is for the benefit of those who did not, and also for our viewing audience, we often see Judy Zanetti here from the Public Education Foundation, and you know, last year Judy was recognized by the state. Well, this year, another member of our foundation, Mrs. Lauren DiOrio, the Fund Development Director of the Public Ed Foundation, received the Leading Light Award from the Sunshine State Public Relations Association, honored for a record-breaking leadership in the coupons for education program, and she accepted, as you, many of you saw her at last week's joint conference. This award honors one individual each year who supports public education from behind the scenes and outside of the classroom, and this is a good feather in our cap, because it's the second year in a row that our foundation has received something, because Judy Zanetti received this very award last year. Good news also, I'd like to share good news with you, you know I'm gonna do that, and regarding our retakes, F.C.A.T. reading retakes, our eleventh grade reading, these are students in the eleventh grade who did not pass the tenth grade reading, gained two percentage points toward the, the average of the state, we're only one percentage point below the state right now, and our twelfth grade students drew even with the state. And we believe there are two reasons for this, one is the fantastic effort of some very good teachers in teaching reading to these eleventh and twelfth grade struggling readers, and also for the usage of the Reading Plus curriculum. We had a discussion several months ago about Reading Plus, and we had a, a principal and a reading coach come here and talk to you about that. Fantastic program for struggling readers. I will share with you that on February the nineteenth and twentieth of the two thousand and fifteen, two months from now, there'll be two consultants here from Reading Plus, and if you'd like to meet with them or like to talk with them more and see more about their program, if you'd contact Mrs. Brewer, and she can make arrangements for that. This, today, for Leadership Ocala Marion Program, many of you know about that, thirty to thirty-five citizens from, from Marion County spend a year-long program visiting various aspects of our community, and today was the education day. And I had the opportunity to speak with that group at, as they toured our school system, they also went to Dr. N.A. Jones Elementary, Hillcrest School, Howard Academy, Westport High School, and this evening, they were going to the College of Central Florida. Outstanding group, and I was able to, again, convey what I think are some very good things that, that we are doing here in Marion County School System. I'm not through yet, though, congratulations, I think, are in order to two of our high schools, Vanguard and Forest High Schools. You know, the Florida High School Athletic Association represents our athletics and our student athletes, and we like to call them student athletes first. They, the F.H.S.A.A. sponsors a fall academic challenge, and this year, in class six A for the fall sports, Forest High School ranked second in the state, and in the same classification, Vanguard High School ranked number one in the state. So congratulations to those schools and the individual student athletes who work hard on the court, on the field, but also in the classroom. That's all I have, with the exception of liking to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. We won't see each other as a formal board after tonight, we'll be here working for the next week and a half, but we're certainly looking forward to the nice winter break also. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent, and Mrs. Stacy, you just,
I'd like to say one more thing. I have the nicest new workbook here. I'm so thankful for our finance department, I've been asking for some information, and they went beyond the call of duty. This looks like it was done by Washington, D.C., very professional, looks great, and I tell you girls all the time in finance that most of us are replaceable, but you three gals would be really, I would be really worried if one of you came up pregnant or something. And, and had to go on leave. I'm so glad that we won't be having that issue, because I'm so glad we are all mature ladies, and I'm gonna have you forever, I hope, because thank you so much for this book, you have no idea how much I appreciate your work, thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to say anything, Mr. James?
No, no, I'm fine.
Ms. King? Mrs. King? Mrs. Ely?
I have a couple things to say. Mr. Christian, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was an article in the newspaper about student transfers and open enrollment, which I believe ends February 15th. And the schools were listed, I believe they're on our website too, the schools that have a vacancy, they have to have less than 90% filled, so quite a few schools are not on there. But if parents are interested in this, it's been, it's happening through February 15th, contact Tony Burke's office, and he'll be able to walk you through this. Also, we wanted to remind students and parents, December 19th is the last school day before our Christmas break, and that's on Friday. And then classes resume on January 5th, which is a Monday. So you'll have two weeks off for a nice holiday. Don't spend all that time on your electronics. Read a book, do something outside exercise-wise, but enjoy that time, and happy holidays to all of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely.
Just one moment, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Lake?
Thank you. I just have a short note. Happy news on the personnel front. Effective December 8th, yesterday, the school board has hired Ms. Terry Brown as full-time paralegal in the legal department. And I think most of you know Terry. She brings a wealth of education law experience and skills to the position. I think she substantially enhances the capabilities of our legal department, so very happy.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Many of you know that Mr. Lake is our school board attorney. And welcome, Terry Brown. And Mr. James?
While we were giving kudos, but superintendent, we need to really give Kevin Christian the hats off because he's president of the, what is the name of the group here?
Sunsborough.
Sunsborough. And as we go through the media portion of our session, Kevin Christian is the, is the light that they hold, that everybody aspired to be. And I just, and I just, I just don't think we recognize him for the good job, or the really good job that he really do. But the other people throughout the state recognize Kevin Christian. And again, every year that I've been there, he's been on program doing something there for the, for the Florida School Boards Association. And I think somewhere, we need to give this guy a round of applause because this is your last term. Thank you, Kevin. You represent us well down there. We missed that one, George.
You have anything to say, Mr. Christian?
Absolutely. Don't ever ask a PR guy if he's got something to say. I served with great pride. It is a wonderful group of professional individuals. Sunsborough, which stands for the Sunshine State School Public Relations Association, is the only professional development organization in Florida for people like me in school PR. We have other PR organizations that are outside the education field, but it's a pleasure to serve that organization as the president. Fortunately, Mr. James, I get to be there next year too because the presidency in this organization is two years, not one year, so. But it's a great, it's a great opportunity, not just to talk about Sunsborough, but to talk about Marion County as well. And you each heard me introduce myself as Marion County Public Relations Officer. So I appreciate the kudos. You know, there's a lot of people that make my job successful, including the three ladies back there. But there's people all over this district that I call and ask for information, and they return it. And I couldn't do my job without the cooperation of all of those people, so thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Christian.
Thank you so much. Board members, just from listening to you and also listening to our constituents, and I haven't had a chance to talk this over with you, Mr. Tomlin, but I'd like to form two more committees. I think that it's, is, that we need to have an accountability committee with the balance scorecard, with Mr. James heading that. And I also think we need a parent committee that meets at least a quarterly, parents with Miss Stacy. And that's my thoughts on what we need as a board to keep, you know, not just growing, but also making, making a difference in our community, making sure that the voices are heard, making sure that the goals that we have as board members are met. So, Mr. Superintendent, I'm looking at those two things.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. And also, board members, you know there was an article in the paper about an appointed or an elected superintendent? And Mr. Tomlin and I were willing to have a workshop on that at any time when you want to address that, just so you know. Thank you. Before addressing expulsions, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through November the 14th, 2014. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? There are none? May I have a motion to approve the bus suspension of student JD-15-26B for the remainder of 2014 to 2015 school year? May I have a motion in a second?
Say move.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-15-22, JD-15-23, and JD-14-25E with educational services through the first semester of 2015 to 2016 school year? May I have a motion in a second?
I have a comment on our agenda. It says JD-15-25. I don't know which is correct. You have JD-14. Which one is 15?
Yeah, sure. Okay. So JD-15-25 with educational services. So I have a motion in a second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-15-24 without educational services through the first semester of 2015 to 2016 school year? Motion, please, in a second.
Say move.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mr. James.
Yes.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? The motion passes 5-0. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Say move. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The meeting is adjourned at 7:08 PM.